And just to clarify that, then, we're motioning for this, that that will be that future motion.
Right.
To move back to where the money comes from.
But the consensus feedback seems to be that we don't want to drop below 5 percent. So in the next meeting, you'll have an action item to specifically.
When you drop below, although we're recognized as a school that is in, you know, red or something, but I think it sends a message to capital, to the Lansing, that we are in need.
It does.
So that it's wrong not to.
But it's over.
Yeah, but we're not really, because we put that money aside.
Now, Ben, where they can come in and just take it over.
To save ourselves, so we should, we should use that until we get.
If you go below 5 percent. I don't, I don't want to get on the EAA watch list unless we have no other alternative. And right now, we do. We do have another alternative.
I, I, I just think it sends a wrong message. It sends a message we're, we're doing fine.
Oh, no. We're loving it. Doing fine. I mean, doing fine is the 10 to 15 percent, and we're, we're 6.5, so, you know.
But I think if you went below, then when they look at their statistics, they'd say, um, you know, 5 percent or 20 percent of the schools are below the four, are below the 5 percent. And we're just avoiding that, not because of anything they've done, it was because we had superintendents that gave us some money to work with, and it's a false.
And, and your, your point's well made from the standpoint of.
Because they're not gonna, they're not, I mean, there are like, well, how many schools would you say are below the 5 percent?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. And so we just make that bigger, and, and then it says, we're in dire need.
Yeah. Well, on, on that very topic, my meeting that I mentioned in the weekly update this Thursday in Lansing gives exactly that opportunity. There's a morning session presented by Tim Skubick and talking about budget proposals, including the governor's 83, uh, which would be our piece of it. It's 83 over 111, but ours would be the lower. And then the alternate proposal, which is the 250 per pupil increase. So the nice thing is either one of those, for once, both show a slight and one kind of handsome increase, uh, to the budget. So superintendent's will have an opportunity to participate in the morning session, but the neat thing is new in this, in this format is from noon to the end of the day, the legislators are in their office receiving visitors. So the whole point is for superintendent's to be able to go to their, their regional representatives and their senator, or senators and say, uh, you know, hey, here are our issues locally, these are the things that you need to be cognizant of, and roads are important, however so are books and classrooms and kids and teachers and, you know, we, we really need this investment, we need the 250, not the 83. So it's our opportunity to have those, those political interactions and, you know, it's very, it's very simple to walk in with that one-page sheet and say, here, here's the budget balance and here's where it was three years ago. And, you know, this is reality. These are the, these are the difficulties we've been dealing with, whether it's healthcare, whether it's retirement. And so while they've capped healthcare and while they've begun to roll back retirement, rolling back retirement to the projection for next year is still four percentage points higher than they projected it would be in the 2014 year, 10 years ago. So they still haven't quite gotten it back to where the state thought it would be when they were creating this graduated ladder model. So, and I'll get to that later in my, in my superintendent's report. I've got some amendments on the top.
Okay, before we, um, we make a motion on this, I want to point out that the amended budget allows the district to continue to offer all programs and services throughout the remainder of this school year. There will be no changes and no, um, nothing that will be taken away through the end of this school year. So I would consider a motion to approve the 2013-14 school year budget amendment as presented.
A motion.
Okay. Support. Support. Is there any more discussion?
And then the, there's only 6,000 left in the capital, in that general fund.
Capital, too.
Right, 6,000 bucks. We're taking 67 now, or 60 in on that.
Yeah, close.
67.
Of course, I'm positive, though.
So, 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 we're just putting off, you know, next year when we need 67,000. We won't have it.
And the hope is we don't need it.
I mean, just.
But you're right.
You know, I mean, it's really nice to say, oh, everything's, you know, gonna stay, but.
You're right.
Well, I did ask that question, though, about general fund, not to say we're gonna have it for general fund either, but, you know, kind of we sweep it out, but, you know.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion is carried. Moving to non-action items, superintendent's report.
And I apologize, I realized as I was going into the budget meeting, I don't think I printed it pretty well, but I just did print it. Michelle, do you mind running down to the printer and making seven copies of what's in on the printer? I hope it printed from here, it looked like it did. But I realized when I first tried, the printer was out of paper, and then we started our, our earlier discussion, so it'll be.
I know.
Yeah. Although I, she, she will attest, we were out of paper because I ran down to the closet to grab paper and wasn't even looking, I just grabbed a batch, and I came back with paper called buff. Well, if you want to know what buff color is, it's school bus yellow.
Oh.
Buff.
Buff is nice.
I thought, I thought buff was like, you know, you know, some.
Thick paint.
I'm sure it wasn't B U S, bust.
It should be. It's B U F F, and I was like, well, I had to rip it open.
Best friends for it or something.
There you go. I was not sure what buff was, and Michelle Ritchie would not have buff in the copy or side of the turner. And I don't blame her, because it's pretty hideous. I will start reading slowly from this as the report's coming, and the first item we've kind of touched on, so it was just a big thank you for the, uh, the 22 iPads, and again, congratulating Kim. And referencing the letter from the tribe that's in your hand up. Another item that's in your hand up that I will reference for you is if you look at the letter from the Health Department, I want to give a public thank you to the efforts of Tiffany Truskin and Cindy and Jan. But Tiffany really heads up the, uh, the immunizations work for the district, and that's kind of one of her main duties, uh, dealing with the Health Department. And we have a letter here from the Health Department, from Dr. Josh Myerson, stating that 100 percent of our K5 students have completed in a timely manner, before the deadline, their immunization records and reports. So it's really a kudos to the good work of our staff here and all of our parents, and of course, all the students have gotten their inoculations. They weren't real happy about it, I'm sure, but, um, you know, these are important things for a district to, to really take seriously and, and, and work with, and, uh, you know, it helps with individual and group immunity, so way to go, elementary students, for getting the shot in the arm, and way to go, Tiffany. So I thought that was a nice letter. The letter does show that we're, I think we're missing one sixth grader, but they measure K5, and so the report is based on K5 at 100 percent. We have a sixth grader not in the mix. And so total minus six grades, 100, and with sixth grade, we're 97, so, um, yeah, we can continue the good work in that, in that area, but wanted to thank her for all of her efforts. This was something I'm sure Shelley would have touched on, but my next thing I have here under curricular and instructional updates is we did have, for three days in a row, in what was a very cold week last week, 100 percent attendance at ACT M M B down at Bible Baptist, and so, um, we'll be sending a nice thank you down there. One of the days, the testing site did start at 56 degrees, which was a little bit cold, but it warmed up, and we did ask the pastor to make sure his custodial staff turned the heat on that night at midnight, rather than at 5:00 in the morning, turn it on at midnight, because it needs to be warm enough when they show up right at 8:30 for, for testing. So, um, but we had a, a good experience down there, and they're great hosts, as they have been for many years. So, um, according to Darcy and Danny Anis, uh, the staff, or not the staff, the students really put forth a great effort and worked very hard.
Did we offer some incentive to them?
The incentive is if they work hard and they show up on time, um, and they really put forth the best effort, that on the third day, that Thursday, assuming we have a parent permission signed, that they're released from the testing center after pizza lunch. So we have a nice pizza lunch for them, and then they do not have to, did it print?
No. Yeah, printed, but I can't make any copies.
Why not? What happened?
No, it's, it's, it's an error that I've never gotten before, it's saying canceling.
Does it say want buff paper? Remember the buff paper?
No, it just says canceling, and I went into it a little bit deeper, and it shows two canceled prints, so I don't know, did you try more than once?
No, I didn't. I just did one, and here it is.
And I tried to cancel that and override it.
I'll run down to the other copier if you want. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hit seven copies. So I'll just select seven copies and print it again, so here you go.
I don't know, it's trying to cancel two other prints, so I don't know if it's gonna work.
Let's try it. At, at any rate.
It's just your paycheck, it's printing.
Right, right. No wonder if somebody had to. I'll, I'll pass one down, there's, there's more coming, hopefully. Moving on, um, in your packet, there is a letter from the Community Foundation that just came in, sent via email to Sue and to me, it's from Dr. Ellis. And this is an update or a clarification letter, uh, it's dated today, so he emailed it today. Basically, it says what he said verbatim, it just puts it in print, so there really isn't anything new in the letter. And, and what he was trying to do was, in writing, clarify the no bricks and mortar versus maybe bricks and mortar. And so what he has spoken to in writing is the discussion that really was framed last month in, in our meeting when he was here, talking about the unknown nature of forever, and what is forever? Who can tell what forever's gonna be? Is it five years? Is it 100 years? Is it 500 from now? Who knows what anything is gonna look like in the area of education? So he did not want to go on record saying, no, no, never, that's why he said maybe. That did confuse me quite a bit, which is why I raised the, the concern, wait a minute, I've got something that clearly says no bricks and mortar. And, you know, he, he has put in this letter, the clarification that, you know, on further review, forever's pretty, pretty hard to wrap your head around. So that's his assessment of, um, of what that meant. So I did want, since he sent it today to Sue and to me, I did want to make sure the whole board saw it. No luck?
Wow. That's okay, we're good, you guys.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll just email a teacher. Moving on, um.
Sarah, I just want to add that the notes I sent around everybody during his visit here, I took a lot of notes.
Good.
So if you ever forget something he said, go back and look at that document I gave you, because I did write down quite a bit, so hopefully it's easy to look at. And it's there, you know.
Rapid fire, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you want to?
Um, moving on to finance personnel update category, these are the things I was alluding to earlier, when, you know, when we talk about a bleak budget, um, these are the two bits of, of potential good news that are being talked about. The first one is, um, this, this dueling budget proposal, one is the governor's school aid budget, one is the, called the classroom for kids budget, um, which in part Mesa, M W S P, and I'm sure other entities have had their hand, M E A as well, in kind of recommending and putting forth additional funding for kids. It, it does create, including the governor's budget, create a higher per pupil funding model. And instead of the $83 increase per pupil, uh, it proposes between 250 and 291 per student, depending on if you're a base foundation district or not. We currently get $7,549 per student, which is above the base, so we would be at the bottom end of that 250 scale. So for budgeting purposes, if you look at the governor's proposal, multiply the $83 times 320 students, for us, next year, we could project an increase of $26,560. If the 250 per pupil increase is voted through, it would be 80,000 for the district next year in increased revenue. And so rather than talking about flat funding or a potential cut, it looks like we're talking about one of two increases, which is probably pretty good. And I'll speak to, of course, the higher one this Thursday. The MIPS' retirement rate offset budget news from Lansing. Again, there's a little bit more good news, there's some actuarial nuancing here, but the bottom line is, there's two sections that speak to the retirement offset and the rate cap fund. One is the 147A, one is the 147C. They're making an adjustment, they understand that districts are struggling to continue to pay, uh, large percentages of ongoing, uh, dollars into the retirement fund, and so they're trying to cap it and actually roll it back a little bit. They are dissolving section 147A and moving some of those funds into 147C and lowering the percent. The proposal is to lower the cap for unfunded accrued actuarial liability from 20.96 to 19.76, so that's exactly a 1.2 percent increase. The funding would flow to districts in much the same way, or the funding would flow in much the same way as it has this year, we would be receiving this in state aid, remitting it to the Office of Retirement Services in the same amount. Bottom line is, the 1.2 percent increase, when you look at a district of our size with our payroll obligation, that would save the district 30,000 projected in retirement costs for the next school year. So if you add that 30,000 to the 26, which is the governor's recommended $83, there's 56,000 in projected, uh, uh, better money balance coming in for next year. I say approximately 30,000 in retirement costs because we don't know, um, to the dollar, how that's gonna take into consideration on employee moves from one step to the next, somebody who gets a master's, there's some little nuances in there, so.
What about, like, food costs? Do we anticipate those continuing to go up?
I, I actually do, but, but that would be impacted in the retirement in any way, shape or form, but yeah, yeah. I do anticipate food costs.
But just in terms of budget in general.
Food costs are probably only gonna hinge upward, yeah, so. So 30,000 there, 26 in the other, or as high as 80 in the other, both in the black, which would be very good news. Steve, I know you sent me an email in my technology updates category, and as I never was able to print this, I'm noticing that my cut and paste of some of your language did not drop in, but in a nutshell, you have had a busy month and will have more of a busy month pulling lots of cable and beeping up speed and bandwidth and network capacity to include the VST lab, but I'm gonna forget at least half of what you shared. Would you mind, um, giving us some tidbits of kind of what, what, a good technology update for it?
Yeah, no, I don't mind.
Put you on the top.
Yeah, it was, I was hoping for an eye popper, is what I said to Ben, but it was mostly a month of maintaining and, you know, trying to improve everything that we had been working all year to improve. Then we got a large number of computers at the beginning of the year that were refurbished and very economical, and, but they were aimed at teachers, and it's kind of disruptive to, to give them a new computer. So I'm letting them tell me when they, when it works for them, so that just continues to go. You know, and the carrot is that some of the old computers have given them fits. So when, you know, when a person gets bad enough, then it's worth the time that the transition costs. So that's happened. These things that Ben alluded to, just having to do with squeezing a little more throughput out of our network. VSTs laptops are, all have wireless cards in them, and that's just the way laptops are made nowadays. So, you know, we're trying to go off the cable there, but, you know, about half of them are still plugged in, and so I was, some of the kids who are plugged in like it because they go faster. So, so I'm trying to make the wireless go a little faster so we can unplug them all. So it just makes it less, it's less of a hassle for me, it lets the room be more flexible, you know, stuff like that. And then also, some of the, we bought five new projectors this year, and we got them with, well, they almost all come network ready, but the, the network ready part isn't quite as fast as the old-fashioned connection, so we couldn't stream with them, streaming video. So went back and got some big fat long cables, hooked those up. Hey, you know, but it, it's not, it's just trying to make everybody's life as good as we can. Those are not costly things in dollars, they probably cost more in my time than they do in cable. But it's all for the cause, you know, to make everybody more productive, hopefully. So that's kind of what it was like. And then, you know, there were a few other knickknacks. Charter, are any of you in-towners that know that Charter went to all digital? So if you weren't already digitally, you had to get a new cable box. Well, Charter, I'm not sure why, but they provide free cable to schools. I think it probably was part of their original charter, no pun intended. And they continue to do that, but they were only willing to give us one cable box per building, so figure that out, right? So every TV in every, in each building has to watch the same program. And the cable box just is at the point in the building where the amplifier is, so it's like in a closet, or in the boiler room, or in the other building. But, you know, still free, but, you know, cable TV isn't as integral a part of education as maybe it was 15 or 20 years ago, you know, because we have so much more access to on-demand video through the internet. You know, I don't know when the last time was somebody watched their cable TV except when they're working at night and watching basketball, or that's what the guys do. They've got ESPN on. Or, you know, Ben is probably the most, whatever, business consumer of it, because he's watching CNN or whatever when there's bad things going on, or the Weather Channel when, when the weather alerts, other things going. So, you know, and he's, so that's what his big concern was, is what are the two channels that I have to call down to Larry Platties off, room to, to get CNN or the Weather Channel?
Yeah, I've reached Larry's closet. I've gone from having 10, 10 or 12 channels to one, but the 12 channels are still there, you just have to run to Larry's closet and pick them, so.
The nature of living up north.
Right, right. I guess the other thing that's going on is, um, testing is going online, by the way. You know, the, all the MEPs and MMEs and ACTs and so on, they all want to go online, they're, they don't want to do paper anymore either. So we're piloting some stuff, I guess we're doing the ACT Aspire tests, which, those are voluntary, correct? You know, but we're doing those online this year, mostly just to get the experience, we wouldn't have to. Next, next year, we might have to, I don't know. And we're, we're piloting something K2, so that'll, you know, I'll have to pay attention to that. You know, our, on paper, our equipment is all ready to go, it's all good enough, fast enough, and so on, but I'll have to be very attentive to that, or there's gonna be some very unhappy students, proctors, teachers, you know, whatever.
Are the iPads gonna add a lot to that?
No.
When we start throwing iPads on all your Wi-Fi?
Well, iPads are, I'm gonna split that question. iPads aren't valid test devices right now.
I was talking about just normal adding here.
But no, bandwidth is not really an issue for most testing. At least, it isn't for us. We've got enough to do it. You know, that's, again, it's on paper, you know, on paper, we have quite a margin, and, but I always like to see it myself. But right now, the number of iPads in our district, you know, the teachers' iPads, you know, they simply can't use it every minute of every day, so that doesn't add that much, but, um, we've probably only got 50 iPads scattered around in student hands, and they're a lot of times on the charger, too. So it's gonna take a while yet until we are really soaking it up.
Uh, Steve, in light of the fact that we're thinking of taking $67,000 out of your technology budget and leaving you with only 6,000.
That's not the budget, right?
Well, it was earmarked for technology.
Right.
You know, and so that's why we didn't use it other years. So, you know, what, what's your thought on that? Are we gonna be prepared for testing online and things like that, since we won't have that little bit of cushion?
Well, from what I understand of testing online, we're gonna be in very good shape.
We're going to be in good shape?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because testing online, they really prefer that you're wired anyway, because it's so much more dependable and the bandwidth is so much higher. You know, the, and bandwidth is a word that gets overused, because there's the, the traffic in the building can go really fast, and the bottleneck is getting out of the building. And, you know, most testing doesn't use that real hard, in fact, they've gone to measures to reduce that by putting something inside your building that kind of soaks up the traffic, and then it only, anyway. So that's, you know, I feel quite good about it.
Do you remember the thumbs up, that in layman terms?
Yeah, I feel good about that.
Yeah, all right. Where you're going to be.
You know, and I, I guess, you know what you can't buy when you don't have large amounts of capital, you can't buy a lot of things that cost multiple hundred dollars. There's a, there's a chance that we'll have another source of money for working on our networks. You know, I want to get everybody's hopes up, but, you know, there are discussions about changing the way that e-funds are used, which would, and then e-funds can be used for communications, basically. And there's, it's still in the talky stages, and it's political, so you never know how it's gonna turn out. But there would, that's one of my biggest concerns, is our network infrastructure, because you kind of need that to make all your devices work together.
Right.
And that's what people want, they don't want their device to work alone, they want it to work together. So, you know, I figure that we can't really get too far ahead with all our devices if we don't take care of that, too, anyway. So maybe they'll come along about the same pace. I'm kind of an optimist. You know, if we had to take a year, kind of, I don't know.
Because it seems like I heard a couple of years ago about, like, new networking or something like that, I don't remember, but that's quite an undertaking.
Yeah, yeah, that, that'll soak up a lot of money. And yes, it is even quite a bit of human labor, that's probably why it's so costly. But it would be, most schools that have gone to a lot of devices in student hands have done it wirelessly, and they've paid for it, literally or figuratively, they've paid for it by not being ready with their network when they rolled out all the devices. It just made their life uncomfortable for a year while they were making the changes they needed to in their network. But, you know, I don't, I don't know how they've paid for it, if they've done it with bond money, they haven't, they haven't done it with e-funds money, probably, because most of the people around here don't qualify, uh, for the kind that you could use inside your building. We only, we qualify easily for the, the stuff that lets them pay for our telephones for us and lets them pay for our internet service for us, but they don't, we don't qualify for the kind that lets us pull new wires in our building and change out the electronics, so.
Student internships.
Student internships?
Yeah, to pull wires.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway, that, that's.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
And the last, the last thing I had, thank you, Steve, the last thing I had, jump into the buildings and grounds updates, just hats off to Vern for getting the elementary boilers operational working with West Climate. I think I mentioned that in, in a weekly update, but I went, I actually went in and took a couple of pictures, which I can, I can email you, they're not very exciting, they just show a computerized control panel, but when you see the before and after, it is a little interesting to think about how the existing system in this building is currently operating versus the new control panel in the other, and the difference is striking. This building has six boilers, the other building has six boilers. However, this building's boilers fire in sequence two, four, or six, based on the perceived need with the interior temperature. And so as it gets cold, they turn on, and if it's not getting it done, they fire the next two in sequence up to six. In the other building, the new control panel actually measures outside air and inside air, and adjusts not only how many boilers are running, but the amount of gas they're burning to achieve the optimal water temp. So if it's only 39 outside, you don't need to heat your water to 180 degrees, which is the uppermost temp. This building is either off or heating to 180. The other building now heats, like, I went in there the other day, it was heating only to 135. Only needed to heat the water to 135 to keep the building comfortable at 70 or 68, because the outside air was relatively warm. When it's minus 18 outside, they're gonna roll max heat. This building rolls max heat all the time because it's the old-style, uh, non-computer-controlled old panel. So, good news is, that upgrade was all sinking fund approved because it was a repair to a failed circuit board. The other good news is, this circuit board's starting to fail, which, as we move towards spring, might be a good time to make the same repair in this building so that we, over time, see an actual savings. Does it have to fail?
Yes, before we can repair it.
It does, it does, according to the auditor, it does have to be a repair to a failed device, so as soon as it produces an error code, which the other building was doing, it was producing an error. producing an error code because the boilers were failing to fire, there's nothing wrong with the boilers, thank goodness, it's just the panel. Once the error code is in evidence, then we can perform the same upgrade at no cost of the general fund. It would be the sinking fund, so... But the long-term savings does help the general fund because your heating goes down.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. I want, I know we want to end this meeting, but just for your information, I'm touring with some students in my class who Tuesday up at the tasking for a builder who does high heat efficiency homes. So, if I get any good info, I'll...
Yeah, send it down.
Because there's a lot of, even on the phone, some of the things he brought up, I've never even heard of, so...
Very cool.
Very good.
That's it?
That's it.
And I've emailed it to each of you, so you have it in your inbox.
Closing guest comment? Anything to add? No? Well, I thank you for being here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:15.
I'll second.
It has been...
Seconded.
Yes.
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Seconded, but...
Yes.
Oh, I thought you would.
Oh.
So, it's not a confusion.
Okay, who was that? You might have that on.
Who was first?
Who's on?
I'll be...
I have you.
I'll get it.
So, I'm seconded.
That's all.